Mayor Martin, you are live.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's our regular meeting of September 26th. The municipality of Central Algonia acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wyandot and by the Anishnabi nations, including ancestors of the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It's also the traditional territory of the Hodnasonee, the Atawandran, the Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Algonia. Does anyone have any disclosure of pecuniary interest of the general nature thereof? Seeing none? Would you read the motion concerning the minutes, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Cook, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council meetings Monday, September 12, 2022 be adopted.
You call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to a correspondence requiring action concerning the Mills Drain. Would you read the motion so that everyone knows what we're talking about?
We're just looking for an appointment, Madam Mayor. So the motion reads, moved by Counselor Krepp, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that council appoint a member of council to represent the municipality of Central Algonia at the quarter of revision of the Mills Drain, which has been scheduled by the City of St. Thomas to be held on Monday, October 17, 2022, at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
Thank you. Do we have a member who'd like to sit on that? Quarter revision, the Mills Drain.
Available that day?
You're not available? Thank you. Anyone else who's on the quarter revision wish to? Deputy Mayor Marks? Are you willing to?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. You would put Deputy Mayor Marks's name on the motion? You've heard the motion? Any questions? If not, I'll ask Mrs. Wilson to call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We have two items we've received for correspondence for information. The strong mayor's one is one we've already discussed before and supported, but... And then there's the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Progress Report. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If not, I would commend the, certainly the both conservation authorities for working toward these progress reports because it's a lot of work and it's, they're having quite a time adjusting, figuring out how they're going to pay for all the things that are mandated now to. Mrs. Wilson, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Krepp, that correspondence items number one and number two, we receive this information file.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to the Central Algonia Planning Office reports, and the first one is the consent application for 45714 Edgeware Line or Yorkland Farms Limited. And does anyone have any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, would you read the motion, please?
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report CEP 4422 reconsent application 45714 Edgeware Line, applicant Yorkland Farms Limited, be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E7322 Yorkland Farms Limited 45714 Edgeware Line, subject to the following recommended conditions: approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lot; a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense; and a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Algonia.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the consent application about 45255 Sparta Line, the DeReese Family Farm Limited. Does anyone have any questions concerning this one? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Krepp, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report CEP 4622 reconsent application 45255 Sparta Line, applicant DeReese Family Farms Limited, be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E7922 DeReese Family Farms Limited 45255 Sparta Line, subject to the following recommended conditions: approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lot; the lot frontage for the severed lot be increased to 30.48 metres; a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense; and a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Algonia.
Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the application for draft plan of condominium approval at 279 Hill Street. Does anyone have any questions concerning this report? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report CEP 4722 reaplication for draft plan of condominium approval, 279 Hill Street, Morgan, John, and Ada Pavia be received, and that council support in principle the proposed draft plan of condominium, file number 34CD CE2201, on lands owned by Morgan, John, and Ada Pavia, which lands may be legally described as part of Lot 1, Concession 2, in the municipality of Central Algonia; and further, that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54406, as amended.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the last one is the application to amend the village report Stanley Bylaw 1505 concerning this same 279 Hill Street. Any questions on this report? Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report CEP 4922 reaplication to amend the village report Stanley Bylaw Number 1507, 279 Hill Street, Morgan, John, and Ada Pavia be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw in support of the proposed residential use on the lands located at 279 Hill Street, which may be legally described as part of Lot 1, Concession 2, in the municipality of Central Algonia; and further, that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506, as amended.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp? Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now for the Chief Administrative Officers' report, and the one is on the Integrity Commission, Closed Meeting Investigator, et cetera, and the new contract. Questions? This is interesting. This came, of course, to County Council, and they did a search for someone to replace Mr. McDonald, who we had had. The costs are going to be a lot higher for any investigation, so it's going to be important that investigations are done that are, that are important, and I know we've had a couple this past year, but... Mr. Shipway, I would expect the cost to go up greatly with this new contract, would it not?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Previously, the county paid a $3,000 a year retainer, and then when investigations or actions required by Mr. McDonald, the price was $150 an hour. As outlined in the report, the average price is significantly higher. However, the county did go to RFP, representing the lower tiers, with the exception of Town of Elmer, and after review, this is the recommendation that the county and the remainder of the lower tiers are putting forward.
Thank you. Mr., sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was in Ottawa at the last conference, I sat in as deputy warden for, from Warden French and West, South, Western Terra Wardens Caucus meeting, Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs were there, well, four or five ministers were there. It's a big concern all across Ontario, and Mr. Clark promised very, some action on it, maybe some different penalties early in the new term, so see what happens, but it's, it's a concern all across Ontario.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Krepp.
Let's through you to Mr. Shipway. In regards to this Integrity Commissioner, is could we not adopt having this Integrity Commissioner and question the ministry as to regards to the cost of these? Because smaller municipalities like ours shouldn't have to be paying this kind of, this amount of money. Is there something that the province can take over this, the, the imposed, the investigator side? Is that something that we should consider doing, or should we just adopt this? What's your recommendation?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The legislation, the municipal spells out the requirement to have these three accountability officers. The, the option does exist to not have a municipal ombudsman or closed-meeting investigator and default to the provincial ombudsman. That, that is an option. However, I would say historically, having that service handled through one role that covers the three of them is beneficial because they often overlap. And, and that would be the recommendation that staff would put forward at that ti- at this time. However, the opportunity does exist to default to the provincial ombudsman serving the role as ombudsman and closed-meeting investigator.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it any indication what kind of cost that we would incur if we were to use a provincial ombudsman, or should we, or could, should we look into this possibly?
Through you, Madam Mayor. When a municipality defaults to the provincial ombudsman for those two roles, you can't default for the Integrity Commissioner. There's no cost. It's just, it defaults to them.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
I'm not asking specifically about the firms. I'm just wondering, were there any, in the past, we had Mr. McDonald. Were there any local ones that would be more familiar with our local area than this one out of Toronto?
Go ahead, Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The RFP was issued by the county. I know they did reach out to some local service providers, however, only the three proposals were received.
How many times have we had use of the Integrity Commissioner, et cetera, during this term of council? I know there were two in the past year. I know of at least one other one.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't have the statistics readily in front of me. I believe there was three formal reports so far during, well, during this term of council. The period for formal records, reports at this point in time is paused.
Thank you. Any other questions before we call for the vote? If not, now you have the motion there. Would you read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Krepp, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report CEO 3222 reintegrity commissioner, closed-meeting investigator, a municipal ombudsman, contract award be received for information, and that staff be directed to bring forward a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement for integrity commissioner, closed-meeting investigator, and municipal ombudsman services for council's consideration.
Would you call the vote, please?
One question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Krepp.
When would this bylaw be coming forward to the council? If it's...
Through you, Madam Mayor. The County Council approved this, and the County Solicitor and Assistant Solicitor are currently working through finalization of the agreement with this provider, and the intent is that once that document, or template document is prepared, it will be provided to all lower tiers, so it could be as soon as next meeting. However, it might take a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fair?
Just curious, if, if we were to vote no on this, does that mean that it would go to the default option that Mr. Shipway mentioned?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Council is obligated to appoint an integrity commissioner, so you do need to appoint an integrity commissioner. If you vote, if you provided separate direction for the role of the ombudsman and the closed-meeting investigator, you, you could theoretically do that, and it would go to the province. However, that may be something you'd want to consider at the time of the bylaw, just because staff would want to investigate further if that impacts the pricing model in any way, shape, or form.
So in other words, if we pass this tonight at the time of the bylaw passing, that would be when we could, you, we could direct you even tonight to bring, to check out the cost differences for the other two points, that we have to appoint an integrity commissioner, no matter what?
Through you, Madam Mayor. To be absolutely clear, council can take whatever action they see fit. I was just pointing out that nothing becomes official until the bylaw is executed, and we would just like to confirm that if you drop two of the services, the pricing model wouldn't change for the municipality if, if that is the case. And again, I would just reiterate, I think the recommendation would be to move forward with all of them, but we're ready to proceed as council directs.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? If not, would you call the vote, Mrs. Wilson, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krepp?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services concerning the East Road traffic calming. Comments or questions on this one? Counselor Fair?
I, I like, I like the ideas, and I realize that East Road is a county road. I'm just wondering if we could, it may not happen till the next council, but I would certainly like to see something like this, even with the temporary speed bumps for Centennial Ave. We have a, we have a very similar problem. We've got a narrower road, but we have a very similar problem, so I would really like to see this come back for Centennial, for Centennial Ave in the, probably the new council. But I, I like the ideas, and I think this, this may work to some degree anyway.
Actually, the, the recommendation here is that Central Algonia not proceed because they're expecting Central Algonia to pay for everything. My understanding at the County Council meeting was that the county would be paying for the infrastructure, the second, the third set of bollards. There are already two that they own, and that we are automatically, we maintain the road, and I was assuming they would just pay us for the maintenance. It would just be part of our normal pay, but they're saying here, no, that we have to pay everything. So staff are not recommending that we do this, but...
Well, just be prepared, oh, sorry, just be prepared, then I would be bringing something like this forward in the, if, in the next council, or recommend it to whoever is on the next council.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks, you wanted to speak, and then Counselor Krepp.
It's no secret, I was the one that brought this up. You know, getting out and talking to people, you hear a lot of concerns, but a consistent message, probably in the top three, is, is traffic speed. It doesn't matter if, what road, whether it's county or whether it's Central Algonia roads. This was brought about, the request as a trial project. It did get a little, I thought it'd be a little more simple than this, but I guess Mr. Lima from the county, realizing that we had not done line painting, so there's an opportunity, when we paint the lines, we could actually narrow the road down. So that's where this probably come from. I certainly agree with Counselor Fair on Centennial Ave, and you can go down a whole lot more roads. St. George Street and Lynn Hurst, there's, there's a lot of them, Belmont Road. And I think this is a consistent message we're getting from the public. I realize there's a cost, but it is a trial project, and if it works, you know, and I've said so many times, everyone hates these things, especially the speeders, but they do slow traffic down. And, you know, we all know an accident, so there's an awful lot of cost to that, a lot of trauma and a lot of hurt. And, you know, if I'm accused of anything, be happy to be accused of trying to get some public safety. And Counselor Fair, again, that Centennial Ave, I went out to see a lady the other day that called me, and you back into, drive into a laneway, you try and get out of it. It's not easy. And it's, it's just, I think we have to start doing something. You know, the new there's a Hamburg place, there's some guy named Joe owns it, or all that new cross, the little Timken place. That, up by Walmart, there's speed humps, speed bumps there. You know, everyone hates them, but they slow the traffic down. Going to subdivisions are there, and those speed bumps, speed humps, whatever they want to call them, are permanent, they're poured concrete, they've been there for years. So I think the snowplow operators must get used to them, but I understand this is some money, but I have to be accused of spending money for public safety on all four. Thank you.
Now, one thing, a, a member of the public on Centennial did suggest, Counselor Fair, that, that the county paint a solid yellow line down the center so there was no passing on Centennial, because that was one of their concerns, was people passing and going at great speeds. So that certainly would help if there was a no-passing zone. Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
We actually do have solid lines up Centennial. There was more by the side streets to put something so that people would really watch. I know at Wellington, we've got some, some other lines, but we do have a solid double-wide line through, all the way through on Centennial for the regular part of the street, but not by each of the streets that come onto Centennial.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Krepp.
This is one of the problems I see that we have right now with the county and the upper tier and lower tier systems. We have, we at Central Algonia have a traffic calming policy in place, and for the county to come and announce that there's going to be an experimental thing where we have traffic studies that we've done in this area. I, I know speeding is an issue in some spots. I'm not saying it's not, but we have a, a policy in place. We might as well just throw our policy out the window, and if the county wants to make all the decisions, let them make all the decisions. I don't remember anything in our budget about a $15,000 expenditure being asked, being put in our last budget that we approved. So if the county starts throwing numbers at us, or we have to do this, do this, do this, it, it's, it's wrong. There's a duplication of services, so I agree with her recommendation that we don't even consider this at this point. We have our tra- our traffic policies in place.
Thank you. Yes, the report explains that quite clearly. It was supposed to be a one-year trial. The county, like, there are several areas in the county that would like to have something like this, so this was going to be a one-year trial in ours. But why we would have to pay for all that, I, that's a good question, because it is a county road. Counselor Wynn, you wanted to speak?
Oh, I was just going to say, I well said, Counselor Krepp, and agree completely with everything that he said.
Thank you. Any, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Just to be very clear, I realize the money is, it's, it's unbudgeted for, but you know, if we had a road giveaway and we had to do some emergency repairs, we'd find it. We're invested in, in public safety, or, or not. Yes, we do have a policy in Central Algonia. The last four years, we've nev- I think it's onerous. The public themselves have to take up petitions. They have to make delegation, whatever. We have not had one, but the complaints about speeding still stand. I, I look at this as a trial project. Like I said, there's a lot of roads that, that need the traffic stopped. Police can only be so, so many places at one time.
Counselor Wynn, and then Counselor Rowe?
Um, not, I mean, I'm very much for public safety, but there's a bigger picture here. And we're going to go around sticking Band-Aids on roads because people can't follow the rules. And, and that's what gets me, is we keep coming up with these little problems. Like, this is a bigger picture where, where all levels involved need to get together. More money needs to be put into, into policing of it, because really, unless you have them behind it, nobody cares. Like, they just don't care. Put up the signs, put up the bollards, they're gonna find another way to get where they want to go at whatever speed, so it, it just bothers me because we do. We end up spending 15,000 here, 50 there, like, it just keeps adding up. But that problem's not going to go away with these little Band-Aids that we keep putting on. And, and so I'm, I, like, at some point, I just have to say, sorry. I've sat in on enough police committee meetings and heard, read enough studies and heard enough talk, and in my 57 years, this problem with driving doesn't go away. So I think we need to start looking at something bigger than just throwing these dollar amounts that never seem to fix the big problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rowe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment, I guess. There were three options presented. I have no idea why the option three, or whatever number it was, the bollards, was chosen because it happens to be the most expensive one. There are other options. Whether they are as effective or not, I have no idea. But this municipality already funds the county road plan, so in my mind, yes, speeding is an issue, but that accountability needs to reside with, with the group that is responsible for that road. And in this case, that is the county. So if the two county members here were interested in, they could go back to the county and say, this is your road. Hold them accountable to actually doing their work, then we might actually go somewhere. So I am in agreement with Counselor Krepp and Counselor Wynn.
Yeah, and I will say that the county recommended not doing it. It was Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Marks, and some others that finally agreed to do it. And I think they were agreeing because they thought Central Algonia were going to pay for everything. And I, my understanding was, no, Central Algonia wasn't paying for the infrastructure at all. We'd put it in and take it out as needed for the winter, but that we weren't paying for it. And, go ahead.
Just one other comment, I guess. Somewhere in there, it just said that the line painting hadn't been done or still needs to be done. This does not prevent them from actually still narrowing that road by those line paintings. That should be the first step, something that's simple.
Yeah, and
Without the bollards.
We do the line painting.
Well, yes, we
For the county.
But the county would direct that, so if it needs to be done, then it needs to be done.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Cook would like to speak, and if I may add a comment for...
Certainly, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Brooks can speak to this in more detail. The road maintenance agreement requires the municipality to repaint lines annually. However, the concept that the county is proposing is not just repainting lines. Lines would have to be blacked out and then painted, and generally, when you paint new lines, you utilize more material than just repainting. And since you've given me the opportunity, I I would just like to say, as Mr. Brooks' report points out, the municipality is subject to the road maintenance agreement, and there's a provision that would deal with this, and the municipality already subsidize objectively the county road maintenance agreement to the tune of approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year. Our role as staff is to try to assist people in navigating the legislative framework of municipal government. And in this instance, Elgin County is the the decision-making authority and responsible for that road. And based on the financials and the direction council has previously previously given us about tightening our belt and being cost-conscious, this is something that should be funded by the road authority having jurisdiction there.
Thank you. And councillor Cook, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Yes, with all the variables regarding this report, health turn and and really it definitely areas of this community where we have a lot of fast cars going down the road, and Centennial is really one, because I've used it myself. And being narrow, of course, has its niche there. But we're involved in the board. Again, we look at the ownership of the road, whose responsibility it is, if we went forward with this because we had a responsibility in it. Not, money is always an issue. Where does it come from? How do we cut corners elsewhere? Will we have the money available, or how does, you know, how do we make that money? But if this road doesn't belong to Central Elgin, then do we have the authority to move forward? So this really is a a huge issue, absurd, and definitely
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Just to councillor Wynn's comment that it doesn't work, when we had the bollards in South of the Arena during the reconstruction of the lift bridge, I would say that they really did aid traffic and slowing it down, and I've heard that comment from many, many people. So I I do think the weather, traffic calming things do work. Like I said, there's speed humps, bumps, whatever you want to call them, all over London where my daughter lives. Everyone hates them, but you know that they they do work.
And I will say to councillor Rowe, the the county did bring in a variety of speed humps, speed pads, like, there were all kinds of reports. This was option one, and it was actually the cheapest of their three options. Okay, so enough discussion. Would you call the vote then, please? Do you want to reread the motion, please, or read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cook, seconded by councillor Rowe, that report ICS twenty-four twenty-two, re-East Road Port Stanley, traffic calming be received for information, and that Central Elgin Council decline the county of Elgin's request to implement a traffic calming pilot project at the municipality's expense on East Road being a County of Elgin road.
Call the vote.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
No.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
We didn't hear you, Deputy Mayor Marks. You're muted.
I'm out of practice. No, sorry.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. And all we have now is a bylaw concerning the Dell Drain, a third reading. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Crevitz, that bylaw twenty-five sixty-four be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. We have no public notice and no notice of motions that I'm aware of. Is there any other business that anyone would like to bring up? Councillor Fair?
I would just like to thank Diane Wilson and everyone on council for sending the nice plant when I was in the hospital there a while back. I appreciate it. It was it was nice, a nice thought. Thank you.
You're welcome, and we're glad you're home and recovering. Any other other business? Seeing none, would you read the motion to move into close, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Crevitz, seconded by councillor Rowe, that council proceed into closed session at seven thirty-five PM in order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Call the vote.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz? Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
You ready?
Mayor Martin, we are live.
Thank you. We have just come out of closed session, so motion from closed session, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by councillor Fair, that confidential verbal report re-CS two be received as information, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now to the procedural, the confirmation bylaw.
First motion on the bylaw, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-seven be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Next motion on the bylaw?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by councillor Crevitz, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-seven be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz? Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the final motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Crevitz, that the regular planning meeting of council be adjourned at eight eleven PM, and the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Tuesday, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM.
Call the vote.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.